Madam Chair that Cooley and Brian have joined so there it was six zero zero.
Okay, thank you. Six zero zero. Um is there more? We have a motion in a second for the sixteenth. Any objections? Six zero zero, thank you. Is there a motion for the August seventeenth twenty twenty one CEO report? We have a motion by Louis. Do we have a second?
The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen only mode.
Question. Objection. Six zero zero motion carried.
Madam Madam Chair, hold on a minute. Who uh who motioned for the August sixteenth mid monthly meeting?
That was Louis and Thelma.
Okay, and then who was the second for the seventeenth meeting?
I believe it was Thelma Louis and Thelma again.
Okay, thank you.
The third set August eighteenth twenty twenty one general counsel. Is there a motion? We have a motion by Thelma. Do we have a second?
Second Michael.
Second by Cooley. Thank you Cooley. Discussion. Objection to the motion. Motion carried six zero zero. Our fourth set of minutes are the August twenty sixth treasures report. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
We have a motion by Louis. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Cooley. Discussion. Objection to the motion. Motion carried six zero zero. Next seven minutes August thirtieth special trouble council meeting enrollment. Is there a motion? We have a motion by Thelma. Do we have a second? Second by Louis. Discussion. Objection to the motion. Motion carried six zero zero. Our August thirtieth twenty twenty one or just did that one. August thirtieth twenty twenty one. One of Vegas General Manager performance evaluation twenty twenty one. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Motion by Thelma. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Louis. Discussion.
My name appears twice. On the side of the table.
What did I do? I
My name appears twice. On the Call the conference. It was present.
Sorry about that Louis. We'll take that second one out.
Okay. All right. Right with with that correction. Any further discussion? Motion carried six zero zero.
Yeah. Can somebody send the link to Eric please? Eric needs the link.
IT can you guys go hook Erica? Please. Okay, so our next set of minutes are the September first twenty twenty one special trouble council meeting acting general manager appointment. Is there a motion to approve? We have a motion by Louis. Do we have a second? Do we have a second for the September first minutes? Lorelei seconds. Discussion. Is there a correction Lorelei?
Louis, we'll remove that second time your name's on there. We must have really wanted to make sure you were you were in the meeting. But we'll remove it the second Louis on under present.
Okay, thank you with correction. Any further discussion? Objection to the motion. Motion carried six zero zero. The next item is ratify five signature. Is there a motion to adopt resolution twenty one dash one thirty five company A closeout? We have a motion by Thelma. Do we have a second? Second by Louis. Thank you. Discussion. Objection to the motion. Motion carried six zero zero. Second ratification is approved signature authority update for one of Vegas Liberty Bank account. Is there a motion to adopt? Excuse me. Approved signature authority. That's a ratified also. So is there a motion to ratify that five signature? Motion by Thelma. Do we have a second? Second by Louis. Thank you. Any further discussion? Objection to the motion. Motion carried six zero zero. Okay, so under new business, we have
Madam Chair, Madam Chair. We still need John Snowball and Eric Armel to stop it and see Teresa to sign the signature sheets for Liberty.
Okay.
Teresa has that. Thank you.
Thanks Lorelei for that reminder. Yeah, Teresa was trying to catch up with everyone last week and um there was a different things so. So if you can get a chance, we got to get that over and updated right away.
And Thelma did come in but by the time Thelma got here, Thalia had already slid it under Teresa's door. So we still need we still need Thelma's signature too. Thank you.
Alright, um sorry about that Thelma. We missed you. Okay, under new business, we have several items. We saw those in our email and the first one is the formation education grant. Is there a motion to adopt resolution twenty one dash one forty? We have a motion by Thelma. Do we have a second? Do we have a second for the education grant? Second by Lorelei. Discussion. Objection to the motion. Motion carried six zero zero. Um Lorelei, was there another one or is that the only one?
Madam Chair, Eric is in so that was seven zero zero.
Okay, thank you. Great. Seven zero zero on that one. Lorelei, is that the only one or is there another one? Okay. From what I can tell that was let me go back to
That's the only one because we already did company A.
Okay, great. Um so with that, our next item is the monthly enrollment meeting. John, did you want to discuss that?
Yeah, I I think um obviously everybody's on board and we want to keep the momentum going. So I just wanted I just think we should make some time available each month. That way we can bring forward any concerns or get any updates. That way we can ensure that we continue to move forward. So my idea was that um you know on the monthly land meeting that uh you know the the agenda isn't very heavy. I mean, there's been a few times where we didn't have an agenda items. So I wanted to make a motion that the monthly land meeting be changed into the monthly land and enrollment meeting.
Okay, um thank you, John. Is there a second? Do we have a second to start? Thank you. Brian, seconds. Discussion. Objection to the motion. Motion carried. Oh, excuse me. Thelma, did you want to object or discussion?
No, no, no. I had a discussion item. Um so if you're gonna combine these two, um are there going to be any any names or enrollment people's names mentioned? Hopefully not if it's going to be combined with the land.
Um John, did you have um ideas on what those agendas would look like or would it would be status update or would it be approvals or what were you thinking?
Yeah, I didn't imagine any names. I I just like any department needs or maybe like just some blank numbers to where like how many um application received this month and status of the other applications, stuff like that. And if there's any needs or concerns that we we need to address. So not specifically providing those. I mean, those will be done the normal way that we have been doing them.
Okay, thanks John.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Objection to the motion. Motion carried seven zero zero. The next order of business is housing or four houses. Louis, did you want to discuss that? You mentioned a letter from Norma. I'm just I don't think I have seen that.
I got a letter from Norma. You want to put up four new houses? It is Mother says she's going to try to work. It's my son, he's all gone. Before the house water before cars. I haven't worked for company. It is for calling in. Need for time for to
Okay, um so we'd be happy to do that for her. I just is it in the packet or I guess does anybody else see the letter yet or did I get it?
They sent to you.
Well done it.
My wife and I got the mail and got mine. They all brought it up.
Let me do a search in my
There's a timeline in there. He wanted to make the timeline.
Yeah, um well, we'll get it done. Do you want to just make that motion?
Um Madam Chair, I'd like to see the documentation because I couldn't even hear what he was saying.
Um I he's saying that Norma sent me a letter so I'm I'm pulling it up right now. I'm looking at my email. Okay, well now that's something else. I just don't want to overlook something that they need. So it would be a letter of a support Louis that's saying that we approve them to go after that project.
Yes.
Okay, um well, let me circle back with normal then and get that or I can circle back with Teresa to make sure that um that's not in a pile on my desk or something that I didn't overlook that. Um so do you want to motion the table or do you want to motion to take care of it by five signature or how would you like to proceed? If I can get this in front of everybody.
I'm like a motion to to five signature. Support. Housing request were for me.
Thank you Louis. Is there a second? Second by Thelma. Thank you. Discussion. Um while get it done Louis, I apologize for overlooking that letter that I received. Take care of it. Any further discussion? Any objection to the motion? Motion carried seven zero zero. Thank you. Um is there a motion to go into executive session for harvest celebration discussion? Motion by Thelma. Is there a second? I have a second by Louis. Discussion. Objection to the motion.
What's the purpose of executive session? Are we dealing with employees?
Thelma, can you talk about um the nature of the executive session if we need to be in?
Um no, it's not dealing with employees. It's just dealing with the power on something we need to discuss.
Okay. Um any further discussion? Objection to the motion.
Object.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Louis, Thelma, Lorelei. Cooley.
John, aye.
Five. Or John opposed?
Opposed, Brian.
Abstentions. So Eric, are you voting? Okay, I'm gonna go with five um one zero motion carried. We're gonna go onto executive session at one twenty. Um we don't have another link, but I'll just kindly ask anybody that's not um invited to the executive session to please excuse themselves. Uh I don't know that we have who's on the line, but we just give it a minute. Uh, I don't know that we have who's on the line, but we just give it a minute.